And welcome to the June 22 city council meeting for the city of Lamar. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. We have all the members of the city council, our city attorney, city treasurer, and city chief of police, as well as Angie Q. So we're all here and ready to start our city council meeting. I just wanted to take a minute to welcome everybody in and also to say, you know, it's exciting that now summer is here. It's great to see everybody out utilizing all the different things that the city has to offer, the parks, the walking trail, our Lamar Loop, and especially the pool. We're excited to have that open and excited to be able to offer the playgrounds for everyone to use as well. So it's good to see everybody out. The only thing that we're missing out of this whole equation is a little bit of nice calm rain. So if you could join me in hoping for, wishing for, and praying for rain, that'd be greatly welcomed. With that said, we'll move on to our with our city council meeting. We'll start it off with an invocation by Darren Strope.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting order. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Rafael Rodriguez.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
She is connected. She's here.
Kurt Kresman.
Here.
Oscar Riley.
Here.
Manuel Temes.
Here.
Anne Marie Crampton.
Here.
Steve Kilb.
Here.
Kristen McCray.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay, with that, everybody should have had a chance to look at the consent agenda. Did we have any items to take out and separate from the consent agenda? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sorry. We have a motion with Anne Marie and a second with Oscar to approve the consent agenda as presented. Are there any final questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and it is at the discretion of the council. Do we have anybody that would like to speak to the city council tonight or that has any I'm sure there's still people just getting on right now, so we can look at that later in the miscellaneous. If there's anybody that has questions, we'll address them in the miscellaneous at the end of the meeting. With no other items or anybody else that would like to speak to the council, we'll move on to the city treasurer's report.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving me the time to do a report from the treasurer's office. So I have a few things that I thought I'd update you on. The Welcome Center is opening back up. Our new contract starts July 1st. And I reached out to the state and confirmed with them that there isn't any paperwork to sign. The contract that you approved on the April 27 meeting will still be in effect, and there won't be any changes to it, so we'll be fully funded as of July 1 for the next, what the state's fiscal '21 year is what they call it. So I just thought I'd report on that. That was good news, and we didn't lose a whole lot of revenue from that, and we're excited to have it back open. Leslie's been working with the state, and I know Steve's been involved in that on what restrictions we have and everything. That was some...
Sorry, a little bit louder.
And then I just wanted to remind everybody that the auditor will be here June 29 through July 14. And Kirk, they usually want to reach out to you and Steve both, so I'll keep you posted. New auditor this year, so I'm not sure exactly what he'll do, but he will be here for quite a while, so I'll let you know if I get a schedule from him and see what he wants to do and whether or not he is going to. Sometimes I ask some questions and I want to get some things from him, so I'll keep you posted on that. And then I just wanted to let you know that I want to commend my staff. The opening of the pool, sometimes we forget some of the work that goes behind, you know, closed doors on that, and my staff worked so hard, and I just want to commend them. You know, that was a lot of employees to get loaded very quickly and had a very limited amount of time before we had to produce payroll last week, so I just want to let you know that my staff is amazing and I'm blessed and I couldn't hurt any better people, so. Also, Steve and I, and I believe Anne Marie, were on a call with the county commissioners and the other town managers regarding the CARES Act money. I thought it was a great phone call. Darrell Spack was on there. I thought it was a really good phone call. I thought they came up with a very good draft on the agreement. Our city attorney has looked at it, and I felt like it was really good. Steve got it typed out, so he did a great job. So on my behalf, I will wait for this MOU to get signed. We'll get it loaded, and then I should receive some law line information. I'm going to reach out to DOLA at that point and clarify some of the things that can be covered. I have been tracking in my office since the first order came out from the governor, you know, just expenses that we've had that have been above and beyond. I've got Jeremy and Pat and Rick and Steve, and we've all stayed in communication, so we've got some other things that we want to see and make sure that they can get covered. So I think that's going forward nicely, and I think that once this is done this agreement tonight, then we can move forward on all of that. I wanted to give an update on the LMR 9 Bridge project. It is complete. They're going to do a final walk-through with Craig and JBA on Wednesday, and then we should be able to close that grant out. And so I wanted to look back through the files today and see exactly, it felt like I've been working on that my whole life, so I wanted to look back and see when we started that project. And John actually received the award letter on December 18 of 2015, so it has been quite a while, so it'll be nice to get that project closed out. It turned out really nice, so I'm really excited about that. Then the street escape tap grant, the work is 100% complete. Angie will probably help me with this one, but I checked with Craig today to see where we were at, because we had payout free come in on that and from Daniel's construction. And so he let me know that the work is 100% complete. They're going through the punch list now, and let's get that signed off on, and we should be able to close that grant out as well in the next few weeks. And I've had a lot of compliments. I don't know about you guys, but I've had a lot of people that were kind of skeptical at first reach out and let me know how nice it looks, so just wanted to thank you for all of your work, too. It turned out really nice, and we got the flowers in, so we've got a lot of people happy about that, so. And then the last thing that I had was the Phase 3 water distribution grant that we have with DOLA. They've scheduled our hearing on that. Kirk and I got the email today. We're at 9:30 on July 14, so I reached out to Steve and Kirk and Pat. We're going to hopefully get together before that day and get our strategy put together, what we're going to do on the hearing. The hearing will be remote, so we only have just a few minutes to present, so we'll need to be in pack for these few minutes. Anyway, that's all I have right now. If there's any questions.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for the city treasurer's report. Now do we have a city clerk report?
So I reviewed sales tax that has come in to date for, from May sales, and so we've only got a small percentage in so far, but from what we've gotten, it looks like we might be on track to at least break even with 2019. So I'm not comfortable saying that we're going to be up any, but break even maybe.
We still have a ways to go though, right? For questions yet.
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, the next item on the agenda is city council liaison reports. Do we have any?
Oh, yeah. Of course, I left my notes outside. Golf. If you have a cart in the shed, you haven't paid your dues, they want them out, and they will do prorate, give you back money if you prorate, you rental. Anyway, they want them out. For the Wiley football team tournament and the two-shot, those are the only ones that are actually still scheduled, the tournaments. And that's the only two things I can remember from that. Then they had the airport. The FAA approved the regional change, Southeast Colorado Regional Airport. So I think it was all the paperwork, the printings and stuff done yet on that? I don't remember.
I think they're, once they approve the name, they're printing new, actually new maps, and we're going to be reflected on the new maps as the Southeast Colorado Regional Airport.
All right. Then we, the master plan, $336,000. FAA will pay for that, but it had to be reviewed by an independent outside to be within 10% of what they figured it would be, and they were on a like $6,000 difference between what the outside person said up there. That's what it was, so. And they have a page for that. We need some new signings, name change for the airport. I'm going to see if CDOT will put a thing down here that says Regional Airport.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to ask CDOT if they will upgrade our airport signage. You know, the standard signs, only underneath it, we'd like to advertise we're now Southeast Colorado Regional Airport. So we're looking for a little bit of a sign upgrade. Vance got a really good relationship with CDOT, so he's going to make that request for us.
And then I, well, we'll vote on this, but Burt Heckman, put his application into the back on the airport board. The thing about quitting, Pat begged him and everybody begged him to stay, so he decided to stay, so anyways. Is that about it?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll probably go ahead. I know a member, Tanya, wanted to ask the community to come up with like a contest for a new design for perhaps the airport now that we have, maybe to rebrand it is what we're trying to do, you know, to. So I know that she wanted, her request was maybe the community get together, and she will reach out to the kids and stuff and see if they can come up with just a kind of a concept for it. And then once we have that, we get some prices and bring them back to the council and see if we can do a few signs. Okay, great. We definitely, we definitely have a hidden treasure there with our airport. It's a great airport, and if you're somebody that flies or flies in and out of different airports in the area, you'll see that Lamar really does have a very excellent airport that has great service and great staff in there, so. Excited to see that convert over to a regional airport. That might open up a lot of economic opportunities for us, is what our hope is, and we'll try to make the most of it. With that said, do we have any other council liaison reports? All right, now we have the long-awaited, much-anticipated city administrator's report. I don't know about that, but we'll go ahead. Reminder, back-to-work day, Wednesday. We will be serving the breakfast and everything, however, a little bit different format. We're going to comply with all the regulations that restaurants would comply with, so, but that event still is going to take place. We wanted to let everybody know that the community breakfast, they are still canceled as of right now, so we will keep up to speed on that. City offices will be closed July 3, as July 4 is Saturday. The Friday before, we're going to be closed, just about with everybody else. Budget work session before our next council meeting, July 13. Is that correct? Kristen, we're still ready for that? Okay. Jerry mentioned speaking in the background. Jerry?
Oh, okay. We do have amended guidelines for outdoor events and things of that nature. Playgrounds, tennis, everything remains at 25. Swimming pool remains at 50. Recreational sports leagues, they're still at 25. Indoor events, for example, capacity is limited by occupancy. Depends on what building you're in. For example, our gym, 25% of 50 people are allowed. Indoor/outdoor venues, this is a little difficult. Everybody's going to have to really pay attention to this. There is an event calculator that's online, and it shows a map on how you're supposed to social distance, so it can be a little confusing, so I would request that everybody just take their time with it and try not to get frustrated. If you have any questions, you can always call the health department, so. We do have coming up, most likely in July, hopefully will be a Level 3. That's already been advertised by the governor. That has not been approved. I want to make sure everybody knows that. It apply, will apply to all activities, at least the draft guidance says that. And the draft guidance calls for 50% or 500 people. And again, that is not approved yet, but that is the next step in the progression of opening up the state as far as we can tell. And I just kind of want to let everybody know that it seems confusing sometimes when there's orders that come out, but I have in front of me an entire stack of orders, new Senate bills. We have a new executive order by the governor. This is hot off the presses, so I would encourage everybody to go to the CDPE website or the governor's website, state website. Please take a look at this. We have, there is draft guidance that's out all the time. This is the Seventh Amendment to the executive orders this month, and also the Senate passed and the governor signed a new bill into law regarding our police departments. Myself and the chief have had a conversation about this. These are all very voluminous, they're very detailed, they take a lot of time to go through, and as myself and Kurt discussed today, there were a series of new bills that were just approved. We haven't even had time to print them all out yet, so if everybody could just please be patient, we're trying to get through them, but they're just coming really quick, and as you can imagine, they're a little difficult to read at times, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the city administrator?
Did anything come out about the variances that each county was going to be able to establish their own variances?
You know what, Manuel, we did get a variance for the county, but that's quite some time ago now. That's actually been replaced by a number of executive orders and CDPE orders. There's only a couple things in our variance that we're still under.
I just thought I had saw something come out from the governors saying that they were going to put out that each county was going to be able to establish their own variances. They wouldn't have to submit them up to the governor's office, but that they would just do it locally.
You know what, Manuel, I'm glad you brought that up, and I want everybody at home to know that that is actually accurate, what you just said. It is in this draft guidance right here that we keep getting, and it says draft. So that was where the confusion from the pool came in, and this draft guidance is wholly and completely different from what actually came out. So we were led to believe that perhaps we would be going down this road, but yet a switch was made at the last minute, and we weren't, so that's why everybody's confused. That's why there was a little bit of confusion on the pool earlier. We keep reviewing draft guidance, but then when the actual order comes out, it differs. So that's, that's kind of where the confusion, I think, is coming in partly.
So there were some discussions early on where citizens were complaining to the state that there wasn't enough involvement and transparency, so that was part of their intent was we'll release the draft guidance, we'll ask for people to give their input, and at the end of the input session, they'll reevaluate it and release the final guidance. That's, is what is causing the problem, is that people see the draft, think that it's the actual product, and it's not. So it's, you know, in an attempt to try to make it easier and more involved, ended up kind of muddling things, so to speak. And like Steve said, there was several bills that were released today and over the last week, things that are pretty significant in certain areas and things that are, don't even affect us in these smaller communities that they do in the bigger communities, so there's a lot to go through and see how it's going to affect us in the next few days, so. Hopefully, this new guidance will come out with the Protect Your Neighbors guidance. That's the next stage, and that is what the draft guidance that he was talking about is based upon, is the Protect Your Neighbors Plan. Right, Level 3. So we're hoping that comes out soon. Yep. Very stressful when they keep changing. Yes. Okay, if there are any other questions for the city administrator?
Do you know if the fireworks are going to go?
Right now, we still have our fireworks scheduled. I believe the only thing that would potentially stop that is if there was a fire warning, and like we've had in previous years where something like that would be the only thing that would stop it, but we will, we are planning on doing our fireworks show, yes, like we would normally do. Obviously, we're asking everybody to social distance and, you know, follow all the rules and regulations that are in effect, but as far as the show goes, yes. Many communities are not doing their show because of either the fire danger or because of the COVID. But we're going to try to do that anyhow, and we're hoping there's enough open space out in Lamar, Colorado, where everybody can sit in their car with their family and enjoy the fireworks display without having too many big groups, so looking forward to that. Thank you. Okay, thank you for the administrator's report. Moving on to agenda item number nine, appointment to the Lamar Housing Authority Board. The, this was brought in by Lamar Housing Authority. They do have a letter of recommendation after receiving applications, and it's the recommendation of the board that to, for our, the city council to appoint Clifford Boxley to the Lamar Housing Board.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously for Clifford Boxley.
And I could hear Jerry.
I could hear Jerry, that's I did. All right, number 10, the next item on the agenda, number 10, is appointment to the Lamar Advisory Board. Airport, airport, sorry, Airport Advisory Board. The term for Mr. Burt Heckman is on the advisory board is expired on February 1. He was serving a five-year term. The board is recommending to reappoint Mr. Burt Heckman for another five years, and he has agreed to do so. Any questions?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Burt Heckman to the Lamar Airport Advisory Board. Any final questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jerry said aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is the concession contract at the Ball Field Complex. This was brought in by Rick Akers, but I'll let Steve.
Yeah, it's actually pretty simple. We had two bidders. We had Singala and we had the Snowball Express. Singala's bid came in at 12% of the gross sales. Snowball Express came in at 20, is what they're willing to give the city. So our recommendation is to award the concession stand contract to the Snowball Express for the cost to the, or the benefit of the city of 20% of the gross sales.
Yeah? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the bid for Snowball Express for the concession contract at the Ball Field Complex for the season of 2020. Are there any final questions?
It shows that they have history, so they've done it previously.
Last summer, Jerry was just asking if Snowball Express was the ones that had the contract last summer. That is not correct. It was Singala's that had it last summer. Snowball Express had it the year before, so. Right, the year before. They did have it the year before, and I think the year before that, so they have had it for a few years in the past. Are there any other questions? We have a motion and a second with no other questions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 12 is the temporary modification of premise for the Buzzard's Roost. This modification of premise is for the restaurant portion of the Buzzard Roost. Of course, the state has allowed restaurants to expand for outdoor dining, and that's what this request was for. Would you, do we have any comments on that with the city clerk?
So they, they turned in all their paperwork, they brought the drawing in. I reviewed it with Kyle prior to talking to the city administrator. They are wanting to use the 12 feet out from the, their building, which is on their own property, to put up a six-foot chain link fence. It will have an exit for safety reasons, but as far as being allowed to enter it, there's only one entrance into the Buzzard Roost, and that's going to be on the main street side. So they'll come in there, they'll come out into the seating area, the outside seating area from, from the inside of the building.
Okay. And it shows they do have a surveillance camera on both ends of that area.
They did. They actually, they've had one up for several years, but they added an additional surveillance camera.
Okay. All right, do you have any comments, Chief Miller?
I went over that with Jay beforehand. In the beginning of the outdoor area, the building kind of changed its color, two different textures on the building. That's where they're going to start it. I had concerns that they were going to clear out by Main Street, but it's, I think it's 20, 30 feet away from the intersection, from the corner, so I have no concern.
Okay.
Carol, I have a question. On this, the emergency exit, I see that there's two surveillance cameras here, but how are they going to maintain the emergency exit? You know, I'm sure they can't chain that thing off, so how is that going to be monitored?
Knowing, knowing just from history with the Buzzard's Roost, when they've had like the road jams, they always have somebody outside monitoring that extra, that extra exit. So, and I would guess...
So you're assuming that they're paying staff to sit there at that gate while that business is open?
They've been very good in the, in the past, so I, and we can verify that with them.
We'll talk to them, I can see.
Well, just for concern, you know, for all the people that are going to be inside there, you know, visiting the restaurant and enjoying themselves, I'd hate to see something awful happen and then nobody being able to get out of the place.
I think it's just going to be six-foot chain link fence.
Okay.
So I mean, does that be of a deal?
They'll scale it, yes.
They'll just push it over.
Correct.
It is temporary, it's a...
Right.
But yeah, we can sure talk to Mr. Rupert about that, see. I don't know if he's going to make it some kind of a one-way gate, so you can't, I don't know what his plans are with that.
I just curious how they were going to maintain that exit there, because at Reese's, I believe we only had one way to get in there, and that was through the restaurant.
We did. Since that's a turn, have the street department decided to maybe put some of those Jersey barriers up?
I don't think they're going to need to, because this is off the road corner. The fence they're going to put up is basically on the edge of the, where that concrete kind of goes bad.
Yeah.
I went there and talked to Jay, and he showed me right where it is. So I don't think we're going to need that there, because it's, I think it's 30, 35 feet away from the point of the intersection to the west, and so if trucks are turning, they're even, they're going to have plenty of room to make that corner and not have to worry about.
It's, we can, if we do eventually, if we whatever need them, we do have them, so we can always, we can always take them out there at a, on very short notice.
When, after he sets it up, if we think we need that?
After he sets it up, if we do, if the chief would like them, we certainly have plenty of them, so we, it would take us nothing, 30 minutes to set them up of a quirk, so we can certainly accommodate that if needed.
Can we approve some temporary modifications of the...
Okay. I'll second that. We have a motion with Anne Marie to approve the temporary modification of premise for the Buzzard Roost, and a second with Joe Gonzalez. Are there... the Buzzard Roost. And a second with Joe Gonzalez. Are there any final questions? Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Item Number 13, which is a memorandum of understanding and cooperative agreement for the distribution of the CARE Act funds. This is initiated by the city administrator, so I'll let him speak. Yeah, this is what Kristen alluded to earlier, when she was referencing our conference call with county, myself and her and Ann Marie. That did go very well, by the way. Just so everybody at home understands kind of what this is. The CARES Act distributed money directly to cities and counties with a population of 500,000 or more. However, for all of us smaller folks, we didn't get a direct distribution. So what the state of Colorado determined was that the distribution would be based on population. So the area that did not receive direct contribution from the CARES Act is 2,554,230 people. So the amount to be distributed amongst all those people then, based on population, is $219 million and some change. So Prowers County is receiving a total of $1,044,201. That's what the county is going to receive. And then that amount of money is going to be distributed based on population. Since the city of Lamar comprises 63% of the population in Prowers County, we are going to receive $592,062, which is not quite 63% of the money, because 10% of it is required to be retained for a later date. And if people need more money, or what the case may be, we're just required to put away 10%. But the bottom line is that we are going to have, we're going to administer this money and have direct access through DOLA. And that is what Kristen is going to be setting up through her office. She's going to actually do that like she does every other grant deals with DOLA. So we have the means to do that. Some of the smaller communities are going to enlist the help of the county to go ahead and report, you know, make the reporting and all that. But we're more than capable of doing that. So we're going to administer our own funds, which is going to be helpful to us. So again, these are COVID-related expenses. We have a running total, and we're obviously adding more to that. We're certainly not over with COVID yet, as everybody notices by the sack of public health orders. So we're going to keep monitoring that. But the good news is, the city is going to get just under $600,000. And I want to just say that the county was very cooperative during our conversation. I can't say enough good things about that. Darla did a wonderful job preparing the draft agreement. Lance has signed off on it. If you have any questions, sure, he'll be glad to answer them, but he's approved it. We are under a time crunch here. So we really need to get this approved tonight. The state did not give us a lot of time. July 7th, everything has to be turned in. So we really need to get this approved. And I don't know, Emery, if you have anything, maybe?
So I do understand that we have to have the agreement with the county completed by July 7th. But I'm not sure I understand or remember what our deadline for using the funds is.
December 31st, 2020.
And as of now, we anticipate some funds being left to help Lamar businesses? Or are you expecting that to just cover what we have?
Well, I certainly know that the city has expenses, and we wanted to make sure that all of our costs related to COVID and things like that, and all the things we've had to do to remote meetings and buy equipment and, you know, PPE and everything, all that, is reimbursed. But we certainly should have some money that's left over that the city can use to help our business community. Right now, I would really hate to throw a number out. It will be a substantial amount of money, though. And I know I'm working with Kristen. We're trying to, we're trying to estimate everything from now to the end of the year to make sure our costs are offset. But we should have a substantial amount of money. So by the next meeting... I think the difficult part of trying to say we'll have funds for the businesses is what businesses and which businesses, and which businesses qualify, which businesses don't. As we know from the other programs that have came out that are COVID-related, many businesses just didn't qualify for some of those grant funds. So we're trying to make it, you know, we've had some discussions, Steve and I, as far as how do we utilize that the best way. And, you know, if we were to end up giving $100 to a business, that's not very, very helpful compared to doing something else. So we've had some discussions. And one of the things that is COVID-related is the restart of the economy and boosting the economy. So whether it's doing some kind of an economic stimulus, or incentive, or something along that lines for businesses, it's, it's very difficult to try to pinpoint how to best use that and still stay within the guidelines. So, you know, it might be, it might not be a bad idea if everyone at the city council members could maybe give this some thought and know that we'll have a substantial sum of money that we can help our business community get through this with. You know, perhaps by the next meeting, if you, you know, this will give you a chance to really give it some thought and think of a way that we can help everybody and offset all of this COVID and the hardship and everything like that. The biggest thing, though, is, is that a business would not qualify if they received funding under, from another source.
Exactly.
Now, let's say they had $10,000 of expenses. They got $5,000 from SECED. They would still be eligible for that other five. It just can't be for the same expenses. So...
And that would be have backup and be documented.
Just can't overlap.
Yeah, no overlapping expenses, correct. So if everybody would maybe give that some thought, that would probably be, be a good discussion to have. We're trying to get this approved and get it in there. And like they said, we haven't got any money yet. We just want to make sure we're eligible, so.
This was the first step on the tier of things that had to be done. So once it gets submitted, then I'm going to ask some questions to you and get some clarification on what does qualify and what doesn't. So that we'll also know what city expenses will qualify as well. So once this gets submitted, then we'll all have information.
So there's still some space from the running total to what's going to be allocated? There's some space in there.
We are, we are going to get roughly $600,000. Now, of that $600,000, there is some space to help the business community, yes. That's correct. Can I move we approve the MOU?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding for the cooperative agreement for the distribution of the CARE Act funds. Are there any final questions? Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Agenda Item Number 14 is the DOLA Colorado Main Street Mini Grant Application. Lamar became a Colorado Main Street community back in 2010. And as a designated Colorado Main Street community, we're awarded five, a five-year grant agreement for $50,000 that is equivalent to $10,000 per year. Angie, would you like to speak on that a little bit?
Sure. So last month, council approved the award letter, to accept the award letter so that we can spend these funds. Because it's a five-year agreement, DOLA sent out the award letter before they sent out the application. So what this is tonight is just the application for the mini-grant funds, which has been $50,000 over five years. So it's just one of those things that we just have to sign and attach it to the five-year award letter that we've already received. And that would complete that process.
Okay.
Move we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the application.
Second. We have a motion and a second to sign the application for the, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the application for this mini-grant application. Any final Seeing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 15 is a Resolution 20-06-01. This is a resolution of the City of Lamar, Colorado, designating the Main Cafe as a local historic property. Of course, we have the Main Cafe project that has been on the books for a little while now. We're trying to move forward with that project, and this is one of the steps. Would you like to speak on that, Steve or Angie? Well, I mean, I can, I can certainly read the resolution if you would like. However, all that it does is pursuant to our own code, is designate the Main Cafe as a historical property. This is the first step that we need to take to secure some historical grant money from the state, which Angie's going to be working on. And as everybody knows, the Main Cafe, we did an inspection of the building. We actually have received a proposal from an architect that we will be bringing to you as soon as this is done. And we're done looking at that. That's for about $15,000. But we're hoping we have grant money to pay for all that. I don't want to bring something to you until we have the grants secured to pay for it. So we'll keep you all on the loop and let Kristen know what's going on, so she knows what's in the hopper. But this is the first step, simply designate it as a historical property.
My only question would be, would it in any way hinder any upgrades or remodels?
Actually, it's going to help us with the money for the upgrades and the remodels. And what we're really concentrating on, Manuel, is the exterior of it. The interior of the building is so bad, and in such bad shape, I'm not sure that anything will be able to be salvaged. If you guys recall, what the original plan was, is to put a cafe downstairs, restaurant, and living quarters upstairs, you know, maybe some condos or units like that that people can live in. So that's kind of like what the project entails. And that's the way the architect's going to be looking at it. I guess my best guess was it's going to take at least $600,000 to accomplish what we would like. Angie's working on grants that actually would even help put kitchen equipment in. And so you'll pay for some of that stuff. So that's the ways off yet, so.
And, excuse me, that would be through a historic tax credit that...
That's right.
Be able to qualify for. So you can use that tax credit either to put back towards the project, which, you know, could be that kitchen equipment.
So just, you know, if it's listed as a historical site or historical, historical building, they're not going to regulate, then you can't modify it this way or that way? I mean, are there any restrictions on, any modifications that need to be done to...
Well, Angie, correct. I mean, if you know what any of the specifics are, I don't remember those exactly. But we established that, I believe, through our program.
Correct. So since we're a certified local government, which is through History Colorado, we do have some guidelines to follow. But it's not drastic, like you would think. So this HSA assessment, a historical site assessment, is actually going to hopefully be done. That's what the architect has come in and looked at the property for. And so what that is, is to look at the exterior of the building only. She is going to do some evaluations on the inside to kind of tell us what's wrong and what the probable cost would be to fix it. But then from that standpoint, is when we would engage with JBA or whoever our engineer or record would be to actually work with the project. So what History Colorado, what we're doing right now is just focusing on that exterior. And so we do want to get the exterior back, you know, to its original, especially on that front side. So there is rules to follow on that. But once we get to the inside, as Steve said, there's so much damage there, so much that needs repair to go back to its original use would be practically impossible. So as long as we're following, it's the Secretary of Interior Standards Guidelines for Construction, making good decisions and putting the building to use, then we're following rules. Nothing to be strict.
DOLA's actually excited about it, because they were helped, I think, acquire the Main Cafe. And they really like to see these projects through. So they're actually kind of excited about the Main Cafe. And we, I know everybody here wants to get moving on something, so. Any other questions?
I move we approve and accept the application and sign the resolution.
Clear. We have a motion and a second to approve and accept the application and sign the resolution locally designating the Main Cafe as a historic property for the city of Lamar. Are there any final questions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right. The last item on the agenda, Item Number 16, is miscellaneous items. At this time, we will accept questions or will consider questions that have been brought up by people online. And then also, if there were any final questions for the city council members that they may have for the staff or any of the members? We do have one question I saw. Well, there's a couple of them. One comment about the CARES Act funds. Duane Gurley had mentioned the Sparrow House has been an amazing food assistance program for the community. It'd be great to know that some of the CARES funds for the city of, or from Lamar could be directed to support some of their efforts. So I don't know if that's a possibility, but I know they did do some assistance out there. We may look into that.
Yeah, I'll write that down.
As something to consider. Rick Robbins had made a comment, the, to consider the lost revenue for the golf course. That could be an area of need that was affected by the COVID pandemic, since we had it closed for a while.
So I'd speak to that. And unfortunately, it's very clear about certain places in the guidelines that you cannot replace the lost revenue. It has to be for expenses that were not funded and due to COVID. So...
So not for lost revenue?
I don't know how that will work for businesses, but it's very clear that you cannot replace any revenue.
And that's the difficult part. Like I said before, if you're going to try to support businesses, how do you do it?
Right.
The guidelines, the restrictions, you know, how many they've used before. So, but these are ideas to consider. We can look at and consider.
If you have any questions to ask, once we get to that, to that point in the process, I know it was very clear in certain places that it can be just...
Now, if, now, if a business had to make improvements, put up Plexiglas for their patrons, stuff like that, that would qualify. Like, like Chris said, you can't give her a spreadsheet and say, I've lost this much money. Replace it. It's simply isn't going to work.
And it was already a budgeted item in my budget, very clearly.
So, right, right. Okay. All right. As far as any other questions, there was one question here. And I know this is a controversial question, but I have answered it many, many times on Facebook, and I've addressed it in different comments. But Mike Tumpelson did ask, just wondering when Lamar is going to put a marijuana dispensary in? The taxes would be great for schools and for the city. Of course, as we all know, the marijuana dispensary issue was brought up a few years back and was put on the ballot for the city, the citizens of the city of Lamar, and it was voted down unanimously, or voted down by a large margin, put it that way. So it was a pretty significant loss on that. The stance that we've taken, or that I've taken on, that when I've commented on it, has been that we welcome anybody that would like to put it back onto the ballot. And it could be a vote of the people. That's the only way that we would open that, those up for the community. And, but we are not using city funds. We're not using city resources. We're not using city assets to actually put this onto the ballot. So whoever would like to lead this charge, if they want to get a committee, if they want to get a group, organization, and get together, gather the signatures, put in petition, and go through the process to put this back onto the ballot, they're welcome to do that. And if it does, it is our duty as a council to honor what the ruling of the community is and what the vote of the people is. So I would imagine if it was put on the ballot and it was voted in, that I know I, as the mayor, would fully support whatever the decision is on either way of the people of the city of Lamar. So did anybody else want to comment on that? Your thoughts? Your...
They're putting one in in Wiley.
They're considering one in Wiley. There was a survey that was sent out to the community of Wiley. And the survey was basically asking if this was something that they would like to put on the ballot. And if it was something that the community would like to put on the ballot, then at that point, the city could make their decision. So similar to us here in Lamar, it would go to the vote of the people ultimately.
It would be on the ballot in Wiley.
That's my understanding.
Right, is that correct?
That's my understanding. I, I don't know what the process would be. We haven't gotten that far. But that was what I understood it to be.
Like a referendum?
No, just a referendum.
Yeah. That, that place on Parter.
Any action on that, to tear down those buildings?
Oh, with Mr. Iverhill.
Before we go, on that one, did anybody else have comments or questions on the marijuana dispensary?
No.
Okay. Then, then we can go on to the next one.
Well, I can tell you that I have seen the draft agreement now so many times. I could probably recite it for you. Lance has kind of been living this lately. The final agreement
The final agreement from Lance was sent over to Mr. Hill's attorney, Geisel, correct? Attorney Geisel? There was one final amendment, and we're assuming they're going to sign it. The terms of the agreement are consistent with the discussion that we had here. The timeframes are right as the city council would like. We're simply waiting for him to sign the agreement. And Lance, are we in final form now, final draft?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, good.
As soon as it gets signed, sent back. The only portion, in, in speaking with Ivor, he contacted me multiple times last week. There's been some questions back and forth, but he did get everything. We did come to an agreement as far as the contract was concerned and the final form. They were supposed to be closing this morning at nine-thirty, but that may have changed because we were waiting for the one last approval. So I'm sure we'll hear in the next day or two if they did finally close on that property. But from what Ivor was telling me, advising me, is that as soon as they close, they intend to begin work on cleaning up that property on Parterre Street and begin working on their project, so.
So Oscar, to directly answer your question, it is in process, it should be approved. And like Kirk said, Ivor Hill has given us every indication that he's ready to go.
Okay. Is there a timeline on where you can be allowed to have kayaks, paddle boats, stuff like that?
Yes, North Park, yes, Raphael, thank you. We have the signs ordered right now. The Department of Parks and Wildlife has approved them. And so the community knows, we've been working on getting non-motorized vehicles to enter into the ponds at North Gateway Park. That's been approved. We have signs that are safety signs we had to order that are consistent with the Department of the state, what I should say, like, consistent with the rules regulating. If you were to take a kayak on John Martin or something like that, we're just going to stay consistent with that. We're expecting that in the next week, and we should be able to open those up.
We'll make an announcement, a formal announcement, when it's, when the public will be available to start utilizing that feature for the North Gateway Parks. But we're excited to be able to offer paddle boats and canoes and kayaks to be utilized, non-motorized boats on the North Gateway Ponds. So that'll be a good addition for our community.
It is possible we might have a councilman that would like to showcase that. Kayaking, maybe sitting behind me. But it should be really exciting for the community, and we're really looking forward to it. And everybody can maybe look forward to a podcast being done on site at the North Gateway Park when this actually opens up. We, we've kind of been branching out a little, I'm sure you noticed that, we're kind of doing on-location shoots now. And we have our production manager who loves doing site-location shoots for us, so. But hopefully, Raph, that'll be coming up real quick here, yes.
Okay. And then we have one, one other item that was just asked about on a message. We have a property that the city has picked up, which is the Troy Motel, next to the Loaf and Jug, on the South Side Loaf and Jug. This is a property that's been in terrible disarray for the last few years, if not longer. We are in the process of working on getting funds and grant funds to try to get that demolished. We hope to someday be able to utilize that property or resell it, find a developer that's interested in utilizing it. But this is one of those properties that'll be a great incentive for somebody to use if a developer does decide to come in, whether it be a retailer or a restaurant, whatever it may be. So I know Angie Q's been working on, on economic development for the city as far as just retail businesses and retail shops and those things. So this is one of those projects that she's been handling as well, trying to get grant funds so we can tear down that Troy Motel, clean it up, and hopefully clear up some blight on our Main Street. So we're excited about that. We hope to be seeing that in the near future, or?
Yeah, just whoever wrote that question, and just, just so you know, the Main Cafe and the Troy Motel are two of the biggest priorities on Main Street, if not the two biggest priorities. I know the city council wants to get moving on that. I know you want to get moving on that, Kirk. I'm working with Angie every day. There's probably not a day goes by I don't ask her how we're doing on the Troy Motel. And we submitted our paperwork, we amended our application, so we're moving forward on those. But the two top priorities for Main Street as far as development are the Main Cafe and the Troy Motel.
Okay. Were there any other questions, councilmembers, any other miscellaneous items? All right. Nope, they've got a book here.
The binder in front of you, I suppose we could discuss that, that really everybody at home's not going to know what that is. This is the copper project that we are working with the Attorney General's Office on. What we were required to do, or asked to do, I should say, by their office, and us along with LaHunta, Trinidad, every other community, Southeast Colorado, was do a housing analysis and determine what housing units we have in the city that would qualify under the copper program. Again, it's for neighborhood revitalization. So we looked for homes that were in serious need of remodeling or actually probably could be tore down. And this report has the cover pages, well, it's probably about a four-page cover report for the AG's office that was prepared, along with an inspection report of every single property that is referenced in this report, with a picture of that property. So this will make it real easy for everybody when reviewing it. We had a lot of, we have a lot of properties in the community that will fit into the parameters of this program.
What, what's the number on those properties, how many?
A hundred and thirty-five, I believe.
Hundred and thirty-five homes that were qualified?
Yeah, that would either, are either in desperate need of being remodeled or are vacant, should be tore down, things of that nature. But in any event, would, again, it's designed for revitalization of the neighborhood, so.
A lot of them are mobile homes.
You know, we, we surprisingly have a lot of mobile homes, yes. The very last section in the book will give you a listing of all the mobile homes in there. And we have our next conference call with the Attorney General's Office on Wednesday, I believe. And we're looking forward to discussing the mobile homes and things of that nature that quite frankly, they hadn't thought of. So we're going to see how that, that works in. The estimated need for our city right now to deal with the issues of a hundred and thirty-five vacant or in need of remodel is about five million dollars, is what we would need from the Attorney General's Office to accomplish that. Again, this is a cooperative effort with the colleges. All of the community colleges are on board. We simply need to work out the logistics of that arrangement, how the properties, who takes ownership of them? You know, where the permits are pulled, you know, eventual sale, they will be remodeled. So there's a lot of logistics that the Attorney General's Office is going to be helping us with. The good news is they have a lot of lawyers in their office, so I'm sure that they can figure this out for us, so. We've been working really well with them, and, so the staff did a great job. The billion planning department staff has actually been working on this for me for at least three months. And it took a lot of time to go out and inspect. They inspected every property in this community, every single one. And this is what was determined to meet the need, but every single home was inspected. And it does take time.
So there are a lot of good things happening in our community, things that just take time. We do have different items that we're working on, whether it be economic development, new housing developments, the restoration of blighted buildings and all of that. So it's an exciting time, I think we'll keep moving forward and hopefully have some continued growth in our community.
I hope so. Like you said, it just takes time, and we're doing it.
All right. With that said, and if there's no other questions or miscellaneous items, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, the meeting is now adjourned.